What's up? It's Way Up with Angela Yee. I'm Angela Yee. And for the first time ever, we have Brad Lander here with us today. You are running for a New York City mayor, but you're also the city comptroller right now. Okay, so for people listening, and I'm aware of what the comptroller does, you're like the CFO of the city. So explain what your responsibilities are.
Yeah, and I will say, most New Yorkers, I don't know if my kids really know what the... They're smart kids, but so the comptroller is both the chief financial officer of the city and the chief accountability officer. On the financial side, biggest thing is managing the pension funds. That's the retirement promises we've made to our teachers and public hospital nurses and school crossing guards and firefighters. So $275 billion of money that we manage, invest to make sure that it's there when those teachers retire. So that's a big responsibility. And we had a great year last year, 10% return. So everybody, if you're a teacher, if you're a school crossing guard, if you're whatever, your money is in good shape, your retirement is there. And we're investing it in affordable housing and good jobs. So that's a big part of the responsibility. And that's a lot of budget oversight. We put out the annual audit every year.
Right.
And then on the watchdog side, we audit all the city agencies to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. They're not wasting our money.
So do they get audited every year, like constantly? Or is it only if it feels like something's happening?
So we're required by the New York City Charter to audit every city agency at least once every four, in the four-year term.
Okay.
So we can't see everything because it's a big city, but we could dig in and really find places where there's, you know, something that's not right going on.
And you are, you're not, are you from New York? No, right?
Originally, I'm from St. Louis, Missouri. I've been here 30-plus years at this point.
Okay, St. Louis, isn't that where Sexy Red is from? Are you familiar with Sexy Red?
I gotta learn more about Sexy Red.
Okay, no, I don't know for sure.
Okay, alright.
That's my girl right there. Okay, so you've been here, you live in Brooklyn?
I do.
What part of Brooklyn?
Uh, I'm on 13th Street in Brooklyn, between 4th and 5th Avenue, kind of between Gowanus and Park Slope.
Okay, alright. Now, I want to get into this because obviously, right now, you work with Mayor Eric Adams. How is that relationship, once you say, okay, I'm challenging you, I'm running for mayor as well, but you guys still have work to do together? How does that happen?
Well, there's long been tension between any mayor and any comptroller. Actually, Harrison Jay, it is, exactly. The Charter says, you gotta provide some oversight here. You're independently elected, you gotta be the watchdog. And when you see things that aren't supposed to be going on, you gotta call it out. At the same time, you have to work together because those pension funds I mentioned, the mayor and the comptroller work together to invest them. Or we issue the bonds that pay for our parks and our schools to get built. We have to do that together. So there's tension built in. And anytime it gets too fierce and somebody's like, ooh, you said something, I show them an old quote from like a comptroller and a mayor back in the 1970s or 1990s. So it's a productive tension. Our teams are always working together. The goal is to deliver for New Yorkers, to make sure our schools are in good shape and our parks are safe and the garbage is picked up. It's not about the two of us.
Right.
And I really try to keep my eyes on the work.
And listen, there's a lot to be done in New York. Because you know, I live in Brooklyn. And so I have my own gripes that I want to talk about. But of course, we should because even with garbage pickup, sometimes that doesn't happen when it's supposed to. And then we have a rat problem already.
Yeah, well, like alternate streets, alternate side of the street cleaning, at least on my block, most people don't move their cars. And then the sweeper can't sweep the block. And you're like, why am I wasting all this time? My block's dirty, there's rats on it.
Do you always move your car?
Uh, we move our car.
Just want to make sure because sometimes you might be one of those. And sometimes you take a chance. I could get a ticket or I could not get a ticket.
Last night, I feel a little bad. Last night, my wife flew in and I wanted to go pick her up at the airport. But I was like, honey, I got a spot that's good till Thursday. She's like, no, no, nobody's, can't move the car tomorrow morning, so yeah.
So what made you decide finally, like, okay, I'm planning to run for mayor? Was this something you had been thinking about? Or was it something that you said, there's so much going on? Because and we'll talk about Mayor Eric Adams and his administration. He's had a lot of high-profile issues that's been in the news nonstop. But when did you decide, this is what I want to do?
Yeah, I was not planning on it. I like the job of comptroller. It's really interesting. I could do it again for four more years. And I find it fascinating trying to make the city run better, invest those funds well. So that was my plan, was run for reelection and then see what comes in 2029. But the more often I'm out there talking to people, they're just like, comptroller, we need a safer, more affordable, more livable and better-run city. Couple of weeks ago, I was in the dentist chair, my dentist office. And the hygienist says, Mr. Lander, I thought there was supposed to be a childcare slot for every three-year-old. Why am I 140th on the waitlist for the program in my neighborhood? That was not the Novocain shot I was looking for. And I just am hearing that more and more. And yes, as these different investigations and FBI raids and, you know, allegations of corruption are coming up, it's a distraction from focusing on housing affordability, getting those streets clean, keeping our neighborhoods safe. And I think we need new leadership at City Hall.
Now, what would you say Eric Adams has done well so far? Because I feel like with affordable housing, that's been something he's been big on as far as getting that done and new developments and new projects.
I like this city of yes that he's proposing, which would let a little more housing get built in every neighborhood. But if you're just judging by the numbers, the rent's higher than ever. The vacant, you know, a unit that's available on the market now, it's average $3,600. Who could afford $3,600? One thing I will say that I think is going well is some of the trash and garbage work. I have to say, the sanitation finally getting to containerization. So you put your trash out, not just in random bags. It is simple, but no one had done it before.
And I was saying that too, when he did the press conference and you saw him reel out the garbage can. And I posted it and then so many people from all over were like, wait, hold on, y'all don't put your trash in trash cans? That's why you have a rat problem?
Yes, but, and so it is simple. Obviously, they're gonna move forward to be able to do it on much larger buildings and get the automated equipment. But just telling every New Yorker, don't put your trash out in bags. The rats are gonna eat, put it in a can with a lid on it. It's making a difference already on my block. So I give the mayor and Jesse Tisch credit for that.
I remember growing up, we used to not, we had to write our address on it because people were stealing trash cans.
Oh, God.
You know?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Growing up, that was the thing. So that's why people were like, I can't put my trash... People had their trash cans like chained to the gates.
Now, you got the compost bins, you got the recycling bins. So yes, holding on to them is...
But then, once everybody has it, then I guess we don't have to worry about that anymore. Now, another thing, I want to talk about the pensions, right? So you guys invest that money and then it grows and then people are able to have that. So what do you, how do you decide what to invest in? Does it matter to you what the organizations or the companies or the private companies are? Like, how do you guys invest that?
Absolutely. So I've got a great staff, about 100 staff in the office. And they're looking at all the different asset managers, people that are bringing us business. And of course, the first question is, does this have a good track record? That it's gonna deliver returns? Because we have to hit at least a 7% return every year to make sure retirement will be there. But we ask a lot of other questions as well. We want asset managers that look like New York City. So we've dramatically increased the number of Black and Latino and women-owned asset managers. In my first year, we got that number up by $2.7 billion. So that's more money invested. And those managers, we did a study, outperformed our other managers by 5%. So we're looking at making sure our managers are more diverse. We try where we can to invest in things like affordable housing. When Signature Bank collapsed and put 35,000 units of rent-stabilized housing at risk, we decided to team up with Community Preservation Corporation and related. And we bought the mortgages so we could stabilize those buildings, even as we made a good return. We look at climate issues because the seas are rising and the temperatures are rising. And as we invest our money, we've got to make sure we're moving in a better direction. We look at workers' rights. We were the investor that supported the Starbucks workers in their unionization drive. And we're still making a good return.
You had that whole employer violation dashboard too. Can you talk about what that is?
Yeah, absolutely. This just went up a couple of weeks ago on Labor Day. It's called the New York City Employer Violations Dashboard. And it's all built on existing data. We just said, okay, if you're an employer in New York City, we're gonna pull these data sources down. So if you have violations from the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, so you're putting your workers' lives at risk. You're a construction company that doesn't make sure everybody's safe and you have violations. That's going up. If you violated their rights to organize and you have unfair labor practices. If you've stolen wages from your workers. The biggest thieves there, unfortunately, are home care companies.
Okay, I didn't know that.
And if you steal from a home care worker, that's somebody who's taking care of our elderly and majority women of color, like, what is wrong with you? So you're going on the wall of shame. So we've got a dashboard. There's about two, over 200,000 employers in New York City. Only 4,500 of them, so only about 2% are in the dashboard.
Okay.
And then the top 11 worst ones are on a wall of shame that we have. And it won't surprise, that's Gucci and Chipotle and Uber and Lyft, but also a couple of these home care companies.
So then what happens? After they're on that, like, then what happens?
Yeah, well, we just put it up a couple of weeks ago. And it's like, you know, a little like, you know, there's the 10 worst landlords. A little of it is name and shame. And so you don't want to be on this list next year, so hopefully clean up your act. But we're also reaching out to the city agencies that do contracting and saying, hey, maybe you want to think twice before you give a big-city contract to a company that's stealing from its home care workers or putting its workers' construction safety at risk. And so we're gonna be looking to use it, not just for transparency, which is where it's starting, but as a tool to have the city do business with people that care about their workers.
And you just spoke about city contracts. And that's something that also, I think, when it comes to getting these MWBEs and making sure that people are getting these contracts, who are people, Black people, people of color, women, that's been something that's been challenging too.
It stays really challenging. People have been trying it for a long time, going all the way back to Mayor Dinkins. But we still are stuck at about 5% of all city contracting going to minority and women-owned businesses.
Why do you think that is? It's interesting to me because people act like DEI is not necessary. And a lot of companies are getting rid of all of those initiatives. But as we can see, people are not in an equal footing, right? There are certain people that are getting these contracts, which is giving them a lot more financial opportunities. And some people are being boxed out and it's not because they can't perform or they can't do it.
Yeah, no, look, look at the money that we're spending on shelter and services for asylum seekers. So they used emergency procurement, which means they don't even bid it out. And almost all of the firms are these big publicly traded firms. There are almost none of them owned by people of color or women. And yeah, the agencies just kind of grabbed them. I think it's easier. Obviously, if you're a business that already has a lot of capital, already has a lot of relationships, already is doing business with the city.
It's easy to get that bid.
It's much easier. So yeah, that's an area that we put out an annual report and we suggest recommendations for things we could do. I'll give you one example. We have a lot of nonprofit organizations and they might get a contract for shelter or services. But then they subcontract the security business, the cleaning business, the food business, the transportation. Those could all be opportunities for a somewhat smaller Black-owned business or woman-owned business. But we don't even track the subcontracts on the nonprofit businesses. So we're looking for, you know, recommendations of just real practical... We want to make big change because the racial wealth gap in New York is 15 to 1. But let's look for concrete steps forward where we could really make change.
And you did just mention housing, right? And the migrants who are here. That's been something that Mayor Adams has gotten a lot of flack for. So what's the plan moving forward to make sure, again, people are getting, you know, having, getting bus here? I think that's stopped now, if I'm not mistaken. But it still is an issue in the city. Because we already have a housing issue. But again, as human beings, we also don't want to leave people who are trying to get their citizenship with no place to go and no place to live. But then sometimes they can't work. There's just so many different things that are happening. What's the plan for that? Because I feel like we really need to focus on that. It feels like it's been a little all over the place. People were really critical of those food vouchers and, you know, money that's been given to migrants who are coming here. What is the plan?
Yeah, I wish there were a better plan, honestly. This was one where if we focused, and let's just take one step back and remember, you know, it's an extraordinarily diverse city. You know, I'm out at the West Indian Day Parade, you know, Jomani Williams and I share a float there, the public advocate. And, you know, so we got a whole lot of folks who have come from everywhere around the planet here. And that's true of this current generation of asylum seekers too. A lot from Latin America, but a lot from West Africa as well. They've come here, they want to work. So the number one thing is helping them get work authorization. It's stupid that the federal government wakes, makes you wait six months. But if the city were helping people file their asylum application and then file their work authorization six months later, and in the meantime, saying, let's get you some English classes and some workforce development. We've got employers begging for certified nursing assistants or people to work in restaurants or those home care jobs I mentioned. And we could have a lot of folks getting on path to get those. And, you know, our employment, our labor force participation is at all-time highs. So those folks don't, aren't gonna take jobs from people here. And if we do that, if we help those asylum seekers get jobs, then I think we can focus our affordable housing resources on longstanding New Yorkers who are desperate to just have a safe, decent, affordable place to live.
Yeah, because I see that as a big conversation with people feeling like, well, they're coming here, they're getting things that I don't even get. And I don't know if that's misinformation, so I would love for you to explain that better. Because I see all the time, well, I'm not getting vouchers, well, I'm not getting free money.
Yeah, so I, and I hear this too, and New Yorkers are really feeling it. And of course, we should be doing better for those New Yorkers. We are not giving housing vouchers to the set of asylum seekers where they are... And now they're getting kicked out of shelter in only 30 or 60 days, even if they've got kids in our public schools.
Man, I'm not gonna lie, I feel bad sometimes when I walk past and I see little kids sitting outside with, you know, families. It feels, to me, I don't see how people can, people can feel so heartless that they are like, just get out of here, you know? Because we don't know what people's situations are.
Agreed.
But I also can agree that we have to do better with people who are here as well.
And look, housing, I think, is issue number one. I'd like to get back to when, you know, we mentioned Mayor Adams' program to build a little more housing. I'd like to see us build housing that's like the old Mitchell Lama developments, where somebody could, a working-class family could own an apartment, like in Co-op City or Penn South or Amalgamated Houses. If we're gonna upzone and make a neighbor, make it so there could be a lot bigger buildings built, let's say to families, a big chunk of that is gonna be affordable co-ops for people like you and your neighbors. That's what saved our neighborhoods in the abandonment crisis. That's where I got my start. I didn't start in politics. I worked 15 years first in affordable housing and community development. And the people who schooled me were people like Yvonne Muhammad, who brought back, like, saved this neighbor, the St. John's place in Brooklyn. That whole block was being abandoned. And they didn't quit on their neighbors. They organized, they took over the buildings, took it away from a private landlord who was neglecting it and made it affordable co-ops for working-class Black and Latino folks, right in the heart of Park Slope. And it's still there all these years later. Let's help people like that. Let's build the kind of buildings that let people own a piece of this city. If we could do that and working-class folk could see, I got a chance to have a place where my kids and I could be stable in this increasingly expensive city, then they won't look at these new neighbors coming in and saying, you know, how come they're getting what I don't have? They'll know, I've got some stability. Let's see how we could do it for the next generation too.
How do you plan to get people to want to go out and vote? Because I feel like, I hear so many people say, we get all these promises of what's gonna happen. People say these things, then they get in office and they don't actually do the things that they say they're gonna do.
Yeah, well, first, I hope people will go out and vote this November. We're talking, mayor's election is next year, this November. Oh, we gotta get out and vote.
But voting in general, I think people get very...
Agree, cynical, they really do. And look, this is on us as, you know, elected officials and politicians who either haven't delivered or haven't shown people why it matters. I've been really trying hard to do that in my neighborhood when I was city council member. You know, we got a lot of new housing built in Gowanus. And now people are, you know, getting ready to move into it. I've tried to do some things, even the comptroller's job can sometimes sound a little remote. We took our audit power and for NICA, for public housing, we said, let's create a NICA resident audit committee. So NICA residents decide what the comptroller's office is gonna audit about NICA. And the first thing they said is, comptroller, the repairs in our units, they don't get done. The contractor gets hired, I think he's somebody's cousin, I don't know. But I never see him, the work doesn't get done or when it does, it's shoddy. And no one even asks me if the work got done. So we did an audit. And what we're recommending in the, in our recommendations, but what I'd love to do if I get elected mayor, is, you know how you could rate everything nowadays? You could rate your Uber driver, you could rate your food, you could rate your, you know, on Yelp. We could have that for NICA, where that contractor doesn't get paid until the NICA resident says, yes, the work was done and they were polite or they did a good job or a bad job. And that data would add up to whether that contractor got more work or didn't get more work. And I think if we could do things more like that, where people really tangibly see their voice matters, it matters in their own day-to-day quality of life, then we ought to be able, then people will be like, oh, I never heard of a comptroller before. I didn't know what an audit was. I don't know why I would care about that. Now I see how that connects to my quality of life. So that's on all of us to do better.
Is that something that you could be doing now, though, in your position?
Well, I don't get to, so I do the audits and I make the recommendations as comptroller. That's what I do. It's the mayor that makes the decisions about, you know, how to do it.
And the city council, right? How do you get along with that? Because I know that the council and the mayor do not have a great relationship with each other. And I guess that's by design.
Um, that has, this is worse than I've ever seen it, I gotta say. I served in the council for 12 years with three, you know, with Mayor Bloomberg and then two terms with Mayor de Blasio. And in the term when Melissa Markovarito was Speaker, we did a lot of things together. That's when universal pre-K happened. Every New Yorker knew their four-year-old would have a full-day pre-K slot. We passed some law, you know, I was proud to pass the laws that give fast-food workers not a crazy schedule where you got no idea when you're gonna have to go to work. Now you get two weeks' advance notice and a pathway to a full-time job. So I'm pleased to say, you know, done a lot of work with council members. Then, you know, not everyone, you know, always thinks, you know, but the councils are...
And you're not supposed to all think alike. But it feels like such a contentious relationship. Why do you think that is?
Oof, I mean, this one seems needless. Well, I have to say, the way it is now seems, I don't know what to say. The mayor is needlessly contentious with the council and with me and with the public advocate. The goal is to make life better for New Yorkers. It really is not about us. So I don't know, sometimes you gotta put a little bit of ego. I mean, it's a business that attracts people that are, you know, out there. But sometimes you gotta put ego aside a little bit. It's not about swagger, it's about safer neighborhoods, more affordable housing, getting that childcare to people.
You know, he's been saying, and he was up here and said that he also feels like he gets extra criticism because he's Black as a mayor. We've only had one, David Dinkins, and now it's Eric Adams. Do you think there's truth to that?
I mean, David Dinkins didn't have all his deputy mayor, his FBI raids or his police commissioner running a protection racket. I don't, I mean, look, what I think New Yorkers want, at least as I'm talking to them, across lines of race and neighborhood, is a safer, more affordable, more livable and better-run city. And I'm hearing people that are hungry for that, that are frustrated with a loss of trust and distraction at City Hall.
Now, I want to talk about the transit system. My mom works for New York City Transit. She's been working there since I was in elementary school.
What does she do there?
Um, I don't know.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, Mom, I don't know what your title is.
I don't mean to turn the tables, sorry.
She works downtown in the financial district. But anyway, we were having a conversation the other day, because I do take the train to work sometimes. It's just faster. But a lot of people are talking about safety. But another thing, and my mom actually called me about this to have a conversation with some of the people from her job. How do you stop people from jumping the fare and not paying their fare? Because that's been an ongoing situation now and it's costing like billions of dollars for the trains, the buses, people are just like not paying their fare. There's less people working at train stations. And even on the bus, the bus driver's not gonna get into it with somebody getting on. It's too dangerous. So what do you think about that and what can be done?
Yeah, well, let me say first, you know, I don't know if you had a chance to watch the video yet from the Sutter Avenue subway shooting the other night.
I did, that's why I really thought about it.
What definitely should not happen is that four people should not get shot from a turnstile jump. That just is, that was really, in my opinion, atrocious policing at the moment that they fired the shots. He was not coming at them and I believe that could have been handled in a way in which we wouldn't have four people who got shot, including one officer and somebody who we don't know if they're gonna recover. Now, we do need to address turnstile jumping and fare beating because you can't have a system on the buses. It's now about half the people that aren't paying the fares. So this is an important issue. I heard an interesting suggestion, and I'm asking the lawyers to look at whether this is appropriate or not, about maybe when someone jumps the turnstile, the officer could just take a very long time to consider whether or not to write them a ticket.
Just delay.
And 45 minutes later, maybe they get to go about their business.
That's also dependent on an officer being there too. Because a lot of them are stations where no one's there to even monitor that.
Yeah.
You know, and so, I mean, what about that?
Yeah, I mean, this is a challenge. There, you know, we want to focus on where there are real safety issues. Gotham has just put out this map that showed that just 4% of the city's 120,000 blocks accounted for basically all the city's shootings over the last few years. So of course, we want to focus our resources in the places where they could really do the most to get illegal guns off the street, to self-crimes, to prevent violence, and not have everybody waiting behind a turnstile.
And you know, the people that are jumping fares, it's not like it's, it's like regular, everyday working people the most. You know, people who have a Starbucks in their hand.
Once it starts going on the buses, once everybody starts doing it.
Because they're like, I see no one else is paying, why should I pay? And so that's, that is just something that I felt, they were asking me, like, what I thought. And I was like, I don't even know what to tell you to do. Because the only thing you could say is put more police there. But you don't want to put more police, you know, in the train stations.
Especially if you're not gonna wind up with shootings like that on a, at Sutter.
Yeah, it doesn't feel like the best place to spend your resources, but then it is impacting.
Now, let me give you one idea for something that I think can make the subways a lot better and our neighborhoods too. We're putting forward a plan to end street homelessness of severely mentally ill people in New York City, which has really grown through and after the pandemic. But it's only 6,000 or 7,000 people, even if you count the 1,500 who are at Rikers with severe mental illness. There are cities that have used what's called a housing-first approach. Our strategy is basically move them along, maybe they wind up in the hospital or in jail, but then they're back on the street and we might say, move along, you can't stay here.
With no resources.
But if they never get connected to housing, then they're just gonna be right back again. So there's places that use this model, housing first, where you take a housing voucher that the city's already got from the federal government and say, let's focus it on this set of the most vulnerable folks who could be a danger to themselves, but also to others. Keep the money we're spending on services, but wrap them in, around that housing unit where the person now is, 70 to 90%, the data shows, those folks can stay stably housed. And I think if we could then not have subways or streets or neighborhoods that have so many unwell folks sleeping on them,
Right.
we could see a city where maybe people be like, alright, you know what? Okay, I'll pay my swipe. I see the value of what I'm getting here.
I was like, maybe we gotta have something where they take pictures of them and then, so that could be embarrassing.
That's interesting. I've heard that for people that don't pick up after their dogs, you know? Some kind of like, you know, shaming system.
Now, you just brought up Rikers and that's been also a long source of controversy. And it's supposed to shut down in 2027, right? Do you think that we're on track to even make that happen?
We are definitely not on path to make 2027 happen. The first, the first of the borough-based jails in Brooklyn, they've now demolished the one that was there. But even the very first one in Brooklyn, I don't think is gonna be built until, up until 2031.
Sheesh.
So we're already far behind the schedule to get the borough-based jails. And we're not taking the approach to reducing the number of people that we have at Rikers either. Since in the pandemic, court processing times went way up. So people are spending much longer at Rikers on the same, the same charge. And so we have to go to the courts and say, let's get back to the case processing times we, we had. It's not supposed to be that you're stuck here. This is kind of where all this got started. Remember Khalif Browder?
Yes.
Who's, who was alleged to have stolen a backpack, right? And he said he didn't do it, but at worst, he stole a backpack. Three years at Rikers. So much of it in solitary, it destroyed him when he came out, then he took his own life. Again, you could ask a lot of questions, but one of them would be, three years you're waiting for, like, you wouldn't have served three years for stealing a backpack if you had been found to do it. So there's a lot we can do. We, you know, we do, you know, want to take an approach to building safety in our communities that gives people better options. Because, look, we do need police to get illegal guns off the street, to reduce violence, to solve crimes. But no amount of policing and no length of sentences is going to help address mental health and mental illness or substance abuse or keep kids from skipping school. So we need strategies that help make our neighborhoods better. And then strategies when people do come into contact with the criminal legal system, process their cases in a timely way.
And no bail also, depending on what is?
I mean, I don't believe that the, the bail reform that happened is responsible for the spike in crime that we've seen. They, you know, they've seen that in a lot of other places where they didn't change the bail laws. The, the goal is to have a fair system that moves people through their process, that when they, you know, they get their day in court. And there are some good efforts going on around the city to figure out, okay, if this is a mental health or a substance abuse issue, is there a way that we could address that and solve the problem more durably than, you know, what we're doing right now?
Man, there's so many things happening. And since we're talking about that MDC, that's where Diddy is right now.
That's right.
And they're talking about the conditions there. And I feel like I haven't heard them discuss it as much as they are now. Like, he can't be there, the conditions are terrible, they're awful, but what about everybody else who's there?
Yeah, so I've been inside that place a couple of times. You know, it was especially that time, I don't know if it was in 2019, when the power went out.
And it was hot.
People were freezing inside there.
Oh, I thought it was when it was hot, but it was when they were freezing.
There, I think there was actually both. There was, anyway, so yes, I mean, and it shouldn't take Diddy being in there for people to wake up and say, okay, you know, that's, whatever, that's the government providing that. You know, we can't be tortured. That's the same, you know, the same as at Rikers. It's our responsibility to make sure, you know, that it's not a, a place that's essentially torturing people.
Now, what did you think about everything with Donald Trump too? And him being prosecuted here in New York?
Oh, my goodness, where do I begin? Let's start just by saying Donald Trump is not a New Yorker. So, I mean, I guess that trial was here as, you know, and that was appropriate. But I, I consider him having forfeited his New York City citizenship at this point. I, I mean, I was at the Democratic Convention in Chicago and I felt so much energy. I mean, seeing Kamala up there and their families and what they want to do for the country and hearing Michelle Obama speak, it was, the whole thing was great. I feel so hopeful about what we could have. And yeah, it's hard to wake up in a country where basically half the people think it's okay to be a sexual assaultor and a racist and a, whatever, I'm Jewish, these things he's been saying, where if he doesn't get elected, it's going to be Jew, Jewish people's fault? That's what he's been saying.
I mean, it's wild. It's wild to me that people can justify why they think that he's, and he can make things up and say it like it's the truth and not get any pushback. Like, they're, the people who follow him are definitely like, I don't, I just don't even know, it's like a cult.
Yeah.
In a way.
Kamala gave it to him pretty good in that debate.
And she's ready to do a second one, but he is not.
Yeah, well, he's a coward on top of everything else.
Yeah, I don't know that he should. I don't know that it'll help him in any way.
I mean, I hope he does because he didn't look good in the last one. Look, I hope everybody is, you know, for the next few weeks, doing everything we can to be calling our friends and relatives in swing states and making sure people get out and vote. Because there is a hopeful future for this country, what it can look like if we have Kamala as the 47th president.
Yeah, I really hope so. I always do still feel like there's a lot of misogyny in this country.
No doubt.
And, you know, I, I hear it and experience it at times too. So I just hope that people are going to do what is best for the country and not feel like a woman can't do this. You literally hear them say, I don't know if I felt comfortable with a woman running this country. I've heard people say that. And I'm like, that's a wild, you know?
Yes, and I mean, that's why I hope there'll be one more debate. Because in that debate, you could see, she can, he, he might, he can't do it, but she can do it.
She was looking like, what are you talking about?
Yes, totally.
All right, now, so you're, you're married and your wife used to work for Planned Parenthood.
Yes.
And so does that shape some of your views too when it comes to like Roe versus Wade and making sure that women have rights? I would love to hear how that has contributed to your policies and beliefs.
Absolutely, yeah. So my wife, her name's Meg Barnett, and yeah, we met, you know, 30 years ago. And she's incredible, so I'm, I'm a lucky guy. And yeah, so she, for 10 years, was the general counsel and chief of staff at Planned Parenthood of Greater New York. And yeah, you better believe that I'm a strong supporter of women's reproductive rights and equality more broadly. And that's another thing that's on the line right now in the presidential election. Even here in New York, there's opportunity to vote for this kind of modern-day version of the Equal Rights Amendment, Proposition 1. Not a lot of talk yet about these ballot items. There's six items on the ballot. Two through six are honestly some baloney that the mayor came up with in this charter revision commission as part of his fight with the city council.
Well, the mayor doesn't eat baloney, so.
Yeah, fair enough, okay, it's tofu, tofu baloney. The city council was trying to get more oversight to have advice and consent of some of the mayors, and he doesn't want that. So to block it, he impaneled this bogus charter revision commission. Those are two through six. I hope people will vote no on those. But Proposition 1 is for, is around gender equality and it'll strengthen the, the production, the protection on abortion and reproductive healthcare as well as advance gender equality more broadly in New York State. And yeah, I support it and, and some of that for sure comes from what I learned from Meg.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would love to hear what you've learned from your wife.